We will call the order to regular meeting July 9, 2020 of the Trinity County Planning Commission. Attention, important laws. First item on the agenda will be a public comment. During the public comment period, members of the public may address the planning commission on matters not listed on the agenda, which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Would anyone like to speak? And do you have anyone up on Zoom at this point?
No one's ready.
Okay. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Two. Zoning text amendment for the retail cannabis storefront uses. Oh, I missed item over one minute. Sorry about that. Approval of minutes from June 4, 2020. Approval of minutes. You want to make a motion?
I'll make sure. I move that we accept the minutes from the June 4 special meeting, June 4, 2020 special meeting.
Do you have a motion?
All second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Upstand.
Okay. I guess I should ask for that. All right, now moving on to Agenda Item Number Two for zoning text amendment retail cannabis storefront uses.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and members of the public, and Ms. Lozier Deputy Director of Planning. And this particular item was to be presented by Director Hunter, and she is not with us this evening. But she did submit a memorandum to Planning Commission for the countywide tax amendment, asking to continue this item to the July 23 regular meeting. So our recommendation of staff is to open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then continue the project to the July 23 regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions to staff before we open the public? All right. Would anyone like to address the commission on Agenda Item Number Two?
Good evening, Chair Frazier, Planning Commissioners and Staff, John Brower from Johnson City. And I think it's very important to keep in mind that at each of the scoping meetings to develop retail ordinance, the main talk in the room and the most comments were regarding having some ability for something like farm sales or a tasting room type experience ancillary to cultivation. And even though most cultivation locations are probably not suitable for retail, some are. And it seems that through a conditional use permit, it should be permitted on other zoning types aside from C1, C2, C3, or highway commercial. A conditional use permit has a requirement of its own Sequa document that is site-specific, project-specific, and could be used to mitigate impacts associated with such a use. Conditional use permit allows for the planning commission to mandate very thoughtful conditions to approve and operate with the CUP. And it seems like we should include this in this first crack at retail. It's absolutely a good fit for Trinity County and is in keeping with the spirit of our program and the transition of our industry into a regulated marketplace and encouraging tourism and economic development and continue to bring maximum benefit to the people of Trinity County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item? Do we have any on Zoom? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. Bring back the commission.
I'll move to continue this to the July 23 meeting.
We have a motion?
All second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Annual Initial Variance CCV 19-63.
Good evening, Chair Frazier and members of the Planning Commission. During the June 4, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission moved to continue this item to the July 9, 2020 Planning Commission meeting and directed the staff to return to the commission with conditions of approval and finding for granting this variance. To date, staff has received two comments from the neighbor that is located less than 350 feet from the proposed cultivation site, the first dated March 18, 2020, and the second dated July 7, 2020. After reading both letters, it can be concluded that Mr. Henness believes that approval of this variance would be injurious to his welfare. For this reason, staff is unable to justify and acquire finding number three, disservice not permitted, and thus is unable to justify all five guidelines that shall be observed when considering a variance request per Trinity County Code Section 1731. Given this and Planning Commission precedent, staff recommends denial of this variance request. Nonetheless, as directed by the Planning Commission, staff has provided conditions of approval and findings that are commonly associated with approved commercial cannabis variance requests. If the commission wishes to grant this variance request, the commission should provide justification for finding number three in their motion. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions to staff before I open the public comment? All right, with that, we'll open public comment on Agenda Item Number Three.
Good evening, Commissioners. Honora Wright with Flora, Consultant for Ms. Jean. We're here again, and last time we were here, not only did the commission direct staff for findings, they directed us to go back to the neighborhood and try to work this out civilly. As you can see in the letter that we submitted from Flora signed by Lisa Wright, there was a meeting held, a neighborhood meeting held by Supervisor Bobby Chadwick, where the neighborhood did come together and talked about this issue of water. This shared amongst everybody on that mountaintop. Really, I think what we need to talk about is not only our attempt to converse with Mr. Henness and his inability to respond or even converse with us, but going back to the water in general, like we said last time, well permits are finalized. She has a well meter in place and in use, as Mr. Wang noted in his letter, which is not even a requirement for licensees at this point. And if we would want to try to see what's happening with water, even though we're in a drought, as we are all aware, we'd have to do a mountain-wide, mountaintop-wide hydrological study to really try to get to the point if it's not drought-related. Water aside, we are here for a variance hearing, and water is a license and/or civil issue of discourse. I advise that if Mr. Henness wants to continue down this road, he can take the proper channels legally. And I do trust that the Planning Commission here tonight will look at this through a variance lens, because that's what we're here for, and make the appropriate decision. This applicant has her state license, she's in Metro, and she's been waiting for this to be approved so she can go ahead and move on with her business. There's also a barbecue, neighborhood barbecue that's in the works to be planned to come back together to keep talking about these issues, see how neighbors can help each other. The fenced-off area we talked about before where the illegal dumping was happening, been talked about putting a fence in that gate so people can still access it, even though it's not a legal easement. Ms. Jean is willing to compromise. But we have not heard anything back from Mr. Henness other than this letter submitted to planning that we had no idea until, you know, the memo was released. So Ms. Jean has undoubtedly exhausted her options. She's gone through all the proper channels of licensing. His complaints are around water only and it has nothing to do with the variance. So again, I trust the commission makes a valid choice in regards to what a variance is really about. And if you have any questions about the letters, I'd be happy to answer them.
So in a letter that you did provide somewhere in the midst of these memorandums and responses, you mentioned that the project could be relocated up the hill?
There are--
They have an additional parcel? Because it doesn't look like--
No.
--there's space on that parcel.
No, they don't have an additional parcel. Where the cultivation exists is where it's been. It's an existing, it's a legacy cultivation. So if we're thinking environmentally, it would be less impactful if we kept it where it is. At the beginning of working with Ms. Jean, we talked about a three acre conversion permit. And we quickly wanted to dismiss that because of the disruption it would do to the parcel there, not only with the costs associated and then all the extra assessments needed. So it could happen with severe development and a lot of assessments and a lot more money and a lot more time. And because where the garden exists is a legacy cultivation, if we're thinking, you know, Sequa was coming down the pipeline, we should really try to bring in any more environmental impact that could be caused. There are only, there's a small percentage of her existing garden that would be outside the 350-foot range. That gives her down to probably less than 5,000 square feet, which is not what we apply for and not what we would like to see.
I have one. You said in your letter that, in that meeting, that all the neighbors except Mr. Henness, one of the things that they agreed was that all of their water flow was down from previous years.
Yep.
And I'm assuming that some of those neighbors live above the applicant, and so any impact to them would have nothing to do with the well?
Yes, and I'll let Lisa speak a little bit more to that since she was the representative from Flora that attended the meeting. But as I was told by her and through the letter, yes, it was, all neighbors agree that there is a water issue. There's a lot of places in Trinity County where we're agreeing on that, though, because of the Department of Water Resources did contribute this as a mild drought season, even though the pressure is probably a little bit worse than that. So taking that into consideration, and then just the bottom line of water is just, is a civil matter. And if it needs to run its discourse, let's let it do it through the proper channels. The Planning Commission is not the proper channel for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. Her name is Sor Jean, Johnson City. She says that she would like the Commissioners to go ahead and grant her the variance tonight. She went through the proper channels, like what Anna had mentioned earlier, with every department coming, you know, depending on the department itself onsite, checking up on her and everything else. She's gone through the ropes, she's spent a lot of money, things like that. Like Anna had mentioned, she's exhausted her resources as well as tried to work with the neighbor, trying to get other neighbors to come up and help her, try to battle or tackle what the issue is lies, but to no avail. It's still there. But however, she still wishes the Commissioners to go ahead and grant her the variance. So please grant her the variance tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Welcome, Commissioner McIntosh. Good to see you there. Lisa Wright from Lewiston. I wanted to share with you my experience with the neighborhood meeting. So we posted a sign at the entrance, the only way kind of into this area, inviting everyone to attend a Saturday meeting sponsored by Bobby Chadwick. And we started from that. Everyone shared cell phone numbers. I think there were five to six different parties that did come together, including one of the writers of an email from the initial variance response, and discussed some of the issues of the neighborhood and how they can work more closely together. Starting a phone tree, for example, in the case of fires. We shared, we have a group text now. Secondly, the issue of dumping on other people's property. Ms. Jean experienced that. And there was the offer of a couple of the other neighbors to help move those. And actually, when it said, "I think some of that was on my property and I don't know how it got moved to your property, but I'm willing, you know, to participate in helping, you know, to clean up the situation." So they were coming together in an amicable resolution of some of the neighborhood differences. That same neighbor offered to go to Mr. Henness, who was kind of noticeably absent. I think all the participants thought that was pretty notable, that he didn't come. One of the other speakers actually at the last meeting that was opposing the variance, we saw him drive by and he wouldn't make, you know, eye contact with any of us. So that was really kind of a sad, you know, note on his willingness to work with the other neighbors. So the gentleman who I mentioned earlier, Tony, he had offered to go to Mr. Henness with what, towards the end of the meeting, we thought was a reasonable compromise. His issue seemed to be, at least what he was telling people there, this secondary easement that he has, which is not an easement, it's not the legal easement, he has a legal easement, but he wanted a secondary access to the back of the property, crossing an area that Ms. Jean wanted to fence off because people were illegally dumping there. And she offered to put a gate in and was hoping that we could communicate with Mr. Henness and that would be a reasonable compromise and no feedback. Or actually, some of the neighbors didn't really want to go speak to him because they've had bad experience with volatile temper and things of that nature. I don't want to speak bad, you know, against his character. I don't know him personally. However, great efforts have been made to try to bring the neighbors together to resolve this. A couple of the neighbors were up higher and had also indicated that they would be willing to speak or participate or write a letter regarding their well production being down this year. It's pretty hard to say that your well is impacted by a cannabis cultivation operation that's not operating either. And it's really more a matter, if we're talking about hydrology and the impact to neighbors, that's more of a Sequa matter that is being addressed in the draft EIR. Some of the mitigation measures that are proposed in that draft, which I think we'll see here in the next few weeks, include metering of wells by cannabis cultivators with monthly reports, monthly or quarterly reports to the county as to their actual consumption. So I think there's this kind of impression that there's all this water. Cannabis farmers don't want to waste water either. There's a lot of conservation methods that are employed. And when you look at the number of plants and even at maximum growth that she might be, the water consumption, it really shouldn't be impacting a neighbor. But again, I think we should go back to kind of, is that really the point of a variance? The variance was originally put into the ordinance as an odor or smell/aroma mitigation measure. It's the proximity of the dwelling to the cultivation and the odor that might emanate. That's really at the heart of what a variance was intended for. So I would bring the commission back to that and say, hey, we really need to take a look at really what's at hand. These other issues, they are kind of neighbor issues, water, et cetera. Water will come up again in the Sequa notification that goes out on this parcel. And anyone would have an opportunity to appeal the decision as well with a $500 fee, and it would come, I believe, to this commission. So there is another, you know, course of remedy in that regard for neighbors that feel like they're impacted when there are Sequa-related matters that will come forth. So I would encourage the commission to move forward with the variance. There's nothing indicated that the proximity of the dwelling to the cultivation area is adversely impacting him. I'm actually very concerned as well that the commission would find that an applicant for a cultivation license without any evidence is somehow injuring a neighbor. I think that's something that we really deal with typically civilly in a court, and judges and juries make those kind of decisions around injuries. I know that's part of the county code, but I think it's something that you shouldn't really rely on in making your determination. So thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration, and we hope that you grant this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item?
Evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. Commissioner McIntosh, welcome. Tom Belenko, Douglas City. Speaking, if I remember, nothing like hitting the ground running. This is not an easy variance. The easy ones are, hey, everybody thinks it's a good idea. Those probably shouldn't even come to you, but anyway, we don't. This is one where you got to balance what the concerns are here. And to the extent, in both letters that we see from the one neighbor who is, you know, within the 350-foot setback, it both seem to be focused on water. Not to say that it's not a valid concern, however, it is not one that's really addressed by the variance process. It is potentially addressed under the condition, the Sequa conditions for licensing. But let's say this variance was granted. The applicant's still invested in the property, there's still state license. It is not ideal to have to move the garden, but certainly it can be moved. There'd have to be a three acre conversion. They would probably have to cultivate a 5,000-square-foot area this season until all those steps were taken place. But the fact is, there is going to be commercial cultivation there, whether it's in the existing spot or a new spot. Depends on whether this variance is granted. But that well is going to produce for a commercial cannabis garden. That's going to happen. So impact-wise, without the three acre conversion, you have less, albeit minor, less timber operation, less grading. You can take advantage of an existing garden. I know water is a concern, but it puts the commission in a difficult position. You're starting to arbiter between water rights, particularly groundwater rights. That is a delicate issue, and I think if the commission were going to delve into that, we would want some very clear framework and parameters as to what we're looking at and how we're going to balance that throughout the county. Even the State Water Board doesn't delve into that yet. They haven't even developed regs on that. So I think we can avoid that. I wish this was the kind of thing where, hey, a neighborhood barbecue worked and everybody got together and they worked out their plans. It didn't happen that way. The applicant sent her a part to try and make that happen. So we have the benefit of the annual variance process. I know it has been the nightmare of this commission and many of the people here, and certainly the staff, but we have. So let's look at this again in a year, but I would suggest we approve this variance. Thank you.
What's agenda, John Brower from Johnson City. I agree with Mr. Belonco. This is one of the few instances where the annual variance may make sense. And the granting of this variance for this year might allow the applicant to get through another year, support their family, and possibly prove to the neighbor that they can operate in a responsible way and to the satisfaction of the neighbor, but also give the applicant a chance to further develop their other site in a compliant way through all the permitting and such and not require a variance next year. I also agree, it's a tough decision to make, but it does seem to be a good fit for that annual variance. Thank you.
Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to address this item?
Good evening again, Chairman and Commissioners. Zoffing from Douglas City. I'm here tonight to actually say that the Commissioners, Chairman, you guys should actually go ahead and grant Sor her variance. And I'm basing my opinion on the notion or the definition of a county's variance of what Bella had mentioned earlier, the word injurious. I think that's pretty much what the whole, I guess, decision-making tonight is going to fall upon. And to tell you guys, you know, how I feel, I think there is. I think Mr. Henness himself has not expressed or provided enough evidence that her site itself is injurious to him. I know that he had brought up the concern of water, but water itself is still a concern. I mean, it's not just in Mr. Henness himself, but everybody else that lives in this county. We know that we are in a drought, and we've been in drought for many years. This season itself, we haven't had enough rainfall as well, so obviously water is a concern. But to me, he has not expressed that it is to the point that it's injurious to him, meaning if Commissioners can go back to his two letters that he has submitted to the Commissioners himself, I mean, he basically stated in there that he has excess of water, and from those excess of water, he has sold the water to the neighbors. If it was a concern, or what I would like to say, an essential item to him himself, water itself should not be sold, I would say, you know. And so that itself, like I said, is not to the point that it's injurious to the neighbor. On the second notion of that, I think that he had mentioned himself last previous meeting that he has nothing against cannabis itself. In fact, he likes cannabis. If that is the case, you know, the notion behind the variance itself, like Lisa had mentioned before about the smell and things like that, there is no problem, you know. And based off of those two things, I don't think there's sufficient enough evidence to say that her site itself is injurious to Mr. Henness himself. So I think the Commissioners tonight should grant Sor her variance. At the same time, I am up here, just so that way, if there's any questions from the Commissioners themselves that they would like to ask, because I was one of the translators throughout her process of trying to meet all the individuals that came onsite to visit her, as well as the whole process too as well. So if there's any questions, feel free to ask me. And then to answer Commissioner Matthews' comment earlier about moving the site to a different spot, unfortunately, that is a not to, it's not possible. Last year at Forrester, I forgot his name, but from Lewiston, came onsite and he looked around the property, and unfortunately, he declined to sign any three acre conversions because of that. So, thank you.
There was a comment that perhaps half of the garden could be cultivated that would be outside of the 350 foot, so then a variance would not be required?
Yes.
Is that accurate?
That is correct, yes. Any other questions? Okay, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom that wants to address Agenda Item Number Three? Okay, with that, we will close the public comment and bring it back to the commission.
I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion, and then we can discuss changes or whatever. I move that we approve variance request CCV-19-63, applicant Sor Jean, APN 025-140-32-00. Reducing the distance from APN 025-140-33-00 from 350 feet to 210 feet, subject to the conditions listed in the memorandum number four issued by the staff, by the planning department staff, and the findings with number three, disservice not permitted, noting that the objections by neighbor Henness at 025-140- noting that the objections by neighbor Henness at 025-140-33-00 are civil in nature and do not pertain to the cannabis cultivation site. I believe that's, I think that that is an adequate motion.
Okay. Are you done before I said we had a motion? Okay. So we have the consensus board before our meeting ended after we started. We have a motion. Would anyone care a second or any further discussion, competing motions?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I can't support this. I mean, it's pretty clear that the neighbor considers it injurious. I don't see how, even if the project was relocated so that it was outside the 350 feet as we heard tonight, that the water use will go on. I don't see that that is justification for us to override what is concerned. I don't see water just as a symptom.
The, his issue with the well, the well was signed off by the county. It's a legal well. The water board issued the water permit. They, I can't see it as anything but a civil remedy because, and the, the people, the neighbors above the applicant are also experiencing lowered flow. So then, and if they are above the applicant's well, that's not because of the applicant.
That's possible. We don't really have enough information. We have the neighbor's letter that said as soon as the new well was drilled several years ago, that his production went down. So it's not just this year, which is a dry year. Some over the previous years have been normal, wet years. And so it's not just this year. It's the way I read the information we have. I mean, I think I'm in the minority here, so it may not matter. Wanted to put my opinion on the record.
Do we have any other comments in terms from Commissioners?
So if the variance is not granted and the garden is moved, the well is not moving. The water is still being used.
Exactly. And by moving the, by moving the garden, they have, it looks like they might not even be able to move the garden because they were denied a 3A conversion.
That's correct.
And, but even if they could, it would involve a lot more damage to the site than needs to be. I mean, it's in an existing garden right now. Mr. Henness is not objecting to the cannabis.
So is there any way to measure or objectively measure how much water is being taken or the ground, the water table? This is an accusation, just like an accusation that the water is going down? Is there, do we have any hydrologist information about this?
The applicant has a meter on their well. Mr. Henness has not provided any data. His, what he's saying is subjective.
So right now, the farm is presently not in operation?
Is that, I believe that's correct.
But it historically did operate.
Last year was the farm in operation?
Nope.
Was not?
It was about two years ago from a previous person that was operating, yes. So I guess it falls in line of other people and now she's getting along a bit.
Okay, well.
When was, I'm sorry, what can I ask, may I ask?
We're here. I have to open public comments again and I think we're beyond that.
Well, I just want to know, I don't remember when the well was put in, is it?
Well, it should be in.
It's in the attachments in first letter we sent in.
But the.
16, data file 914-2016.
Okay, thank you. I didn't remember when it was.
All right, well, we have a motion. We have a second. I also have concerns with this. I know it's a, this is a tough one because we have a neighbor who has an issue and believes he's being harmed while he also said he was cultivating. So normally, the harm that we're dealing with is odor and other things that people don't like about cannabis. To me though, the variance issue is, it's more than just that. And I've said it over and over and over again, I don't like the way we do it. It shouldn't be to a residential structure because by doing this, if we grant this variance, we are giving the applicant the use of neighbor's property. We are saying, okay, you have the right to use the neighbor's property to their house. So I do, that's what a variance to a structure rather than a property line does. So I do have an issue with having a concerned neighbor. We have had a road precedent in the past where we, one time, we did grant a variance when there was a concerned neighbor, only one in all the variances we've done. So it's a hard, it's a hard finding to make that we are not, that there is no harm. If the neighbor feels harmed, then.
But the neighbor also has made, when he was reached out to and an attempt was made, he did not. And one of the things that we wanted them to do was to try to work it out. He refused.
Well, I am, I do like that they reached out to the neighbor. I think that that's definitely a step in the right direction. I also think that there are other options. And, well, it may not be in the most perfect outcome. I think that I have a hard time supporting a variance when we have a concerned neighbor. I think we could keep this back and forth for a long time. We do have motion and a second. We have about one minute before we have to re, we have to reboot this meeting. So do we have any competing motions? Or do we want to take a vote on this motion? And, or do we have any other evidence that you want to report, anyone? Okay, with that, I think we will take a vote. And do we need to do a roll call vote on this? Okay, well, I will leave that up to you.
Okay. Commissioner McHugh is absent tonight, so. Commissioner Matthews?
Nay.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Frazier?
Nay.
Okay.
Doesn't the tie go to nay?
Yes. We needed five people tonight. So that would be number three, the variance will be denied and we will move on to agenda item number four. Would you like to reboot this before we start this item? Okay, so we will take the, what, five-minute recess and then start up again. Thank you. And moving on to agenda item number four, conditional use permit P-19-22. Are we up on Zoom now?
Okay, yeah, we're good. So agenda item number four is a conditional use permit, E-19-22. That's for Evans for Tulley Creek, conditional use permit. And this item was also an item that Director Hunter was bringing forward and has given a memo to the planning commission requesting continuance on this item. And the date for continuance would be August 13, 2020. And in this particular case on this project, there was some missing information and Director Hunter is asking to allow adequate time to complete agency referral process and compile the conditions and protocols for this particular project. So that, that being said, staff would recommend that we open the public hearing, close the public hearing and continue to the August 13, 2020 planning session. And that concludes my report and I would be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions to staff? Okay, we will open public comment on agenda item number four. Anyone would like to address the commission? Anyone on Zoom? Hearing done, we will close the public comment and bring back the commission.
I'd like a motion to continue this item to August 13, 2020 for staff making a motion.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item number five, annual initial variance CCB-20-12.
As stated in the memo for this item, staff is requesting that the commission continue this item to the July 23 planning session meeting to allow additional time for staff to receive an updated site plan from the consultant and to allow staff adequate time to respond to agency comment. Given that this item was publicly noted, staff recommends opening public hearing, closing public hearing and making a motion to continue this item to the July 23, 2020 planning session.
Any questions to staff? Okay, we will open this item to public comment.
Good evening, Dr. Brower. I am the consultant on this matter, so I'll wait to say anything probably until next time. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anyone on Zoom?
No.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment and bring back the little planning question. Anyone care to make a vote?
I move that we continue item five for, you, I don't care, I'm confused here.
Item number five.
And we are asking to continue it to what?
This is July 23.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Looking at the wrong paper, got too many spread out here. That we continue item number five to July 23.
Second that motion? Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item number six, annual initial variance CCB-20-14.
The applicant's consultant has requested to continue this item to the July 23, to allow additional time to verify recent updates to the site plan. And given that this item was publicly noted, staff recommends opening public hearing, closing the public hearing and making a motion to continue the July 23 planning session.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to staff? I will open this item to public comment.
Dr. Brower, I'm the consultant on this matter. If you have any questions, thank you for coming out this evening.
Any other public comment? Okay, with that, we will close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission.
I move that we continue agenda item six as requested by the applicant and staff to the July 23 planning session meeting.
Second that. We have a motion and a second. Any competing motions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. With that, moving on, planning question reports.
I'd like to welcome our new commissioner, Commissioner McIntosh.
Very definitely, I want to have you.
Thank you.
That's my only item.
Okay. Fighting director report?
The report.
Okay, and with that, we are adjourned.